Okay, good evening and welcome to the Millbury Planning Commission for this Wednesday, February 21st, 2024. Just going through some announcements initially. Information on language and special assistance. Any attendees who require special assistance, disability-related modification or language assistance in order to participate in the meeting should contact the Planning Division or let us know here. Notification prior to the meeting enables us in the city to make reasonable arrangements to ensure accessibility to the meeting. The meeting will be held in person here in the Millbury Council Chamber according to the Ralph M. Brown Act and limitations prescribed by state law. To maximize transparency, public access, while the meeting takes place, members of the public may attend in person here or via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public are encouraged to provide comments. Maximum time for public comment. Speakers are subject to a three-minute time limit unless otherwise determined by Chair. If you are in person and wish to speak on a specific topic, please fill out a speaker request slip and turn it into the staff. Virtual attendees can participate via Zoom and select "Join the Meeting," use the raise hand function. Hopefully we'll have that down by now. Okay, so I'd like to call this meeting, the Special Planning Commission meeting, to order. And let's start with the roll call, please.
Commissioner Choi?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Chan?
Here.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Here.
Thank you. All members of the Planning Commission are present.
Okay, and now if you're able to join me, I'd like to welcome you to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We've been mentioning in our agenda items, land acknowledgement. These are the ancestral, traditional, contemporary lands of the Rahmatish Oloni people, and we invite you to learn more about Rahmatish by visiting www.rahmatish.org to learn more about the indigenous peoples. And going to Agenda Item Number One, we have an Agenda Review, if there are any items.
I'd like to just make a comment on that. It looks like we have one that is residential, and sometimes it might make sense to either do it first or do it last rather than in between. Does anybody else feel that way?
Did staff put this in a particular order for a reason we don't know about? No?
Okay. Do we need a motion on that or just state? Okay. So Catherine, Commissioner Quigg recommends moving the Presidential Design Review Item 4B to the top of the list, so that way neighbors and participants are welcome to review the project first before sitting, and they're welcome to stay if they want to sit through the other items. Okay, any other Agenda Items? Okay. That being said, nothing from staff, right? Okay. Okay, any other announcements from staff, notices?
There's no staff.
Okay. Okay, Item Number Two, moving on. We have an approval of minutes of which there are none, so moving right along to Item Number Three. This item is for public communications, reserved for persons wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Do we have any persons?
There are no slips and no hands raised.
Okay, and nobody online too, right? Okay. So moving right along, moving pretty fast here to Item Four, Public Hearing, and we'll jump to Item 4B for Residential Design Review for 1343 Terrace Drive. This is a public hearing on design review permit application to allow the demolition of an existing single-family residence and the construction of a new 5,510 square foot two-story, single-family residence and an exception request to allow the project to exceed the maximum FAR and an exception to the upper-story side setback in the single-family residential R1 zoning district. This project is categorically exempt pursuant to sequel guidelines 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures Class III because the construction is for one, single-family residence in an urbanized area and the area in which the project is located is not environmentally sensitive. And we have Nestor here.
Good evening, Chair Wong and Planning Commissioners. I'm Nestor Guevara, Associate Planner here at the City of Millbury, and I'll be presenting the item before you tonight. This is an item as described for a designer review permit as well as an exception request for a new two-story house in the R1 zone. And the project site is located in the Meadows neighborhood. You'll see it here in this slide on the red dot there. That's the project site. As a way of background, the site is located in the R1 Single Family Residential zoning district. It's an 11,400-square-foot interior lot, but it does contain significant slope in the rear that reduces the buildable area per zoning code. The lot currently contains a 2,200-square-foot, single-story house, and the proposal is to demolish that house and build a new two-story home. This here is the existing site plan for the single-family home that is to be demolished, and on the next slide we'll see the proposed site plan, which shows the two-story home. This two-story home meets all the ground-level floor or ground-floor setbacks as well as other development standards such as the landscaping of the front as well as the rear open yard requirement. We got lights now, I guess. Okay, go back one.
Okay.
I do want to point out on the second story here that there's a portion by the trellis where the second-story setback isn't met, and that's where the applicant is requesting a second story, requesting an exception for that second-story setback. Going through the floor plans now, this is the lower level or basement floor plan. It's a game room, and then there's social space for a future junior accessory dwelling unit as well. The first story contains a living room, dining room, kitchen, an entrance, the attached two-car garage, as well as a mudroom, and a rear deck. There's also space in the front for an attached accessory dwelling unit that would be reviewed at a later date through a building permit, similarly to the JADU. And then the second story features five bedrooms and four bathrooms, as well as office space, a laundry room, and a rear deck off of one of the bedrooms. And this slide here also shows that second story where bedroom number five is, as well as bathroom number four. That's kind of the portion where they're requesting that second-story exception. This is the proposed front elevation. The house meets the maximum allowed height for the R1 zone. It stands at about, I believe, 24 feet and 7 inches. Moving along, this is the rear elevation here, then the left-side elevation, and the right-side And then this graphic is just the 3D rendering of what the project would look like if and when it is built. In terms of neighbor response, a total of 12 adjacent owner consultation forms were sent out by the applicant. Out of these, 11 were returned in support of the project, while one of the neighbors returned two letters in opposition to the project. The opposition letter came from the neighbor at 1336 Ridgewood Drive. 1336 Ridgewood Drive is directly in the rear of the project site, of 1343 Terrace. The adjacent neighbor mentioned concerns regarding site drainage, the stability of the hillside, as well as the proposed pool in the project. Staff notes that there is a significant slope or difference in elevation that slopes down from Terrace Drive towards Ridgewood Drive. In addressing the concerns from the neighbor, staff notes that per building conditions of approval, the applicant will be required to provide a geotechnical report upon building permit review. The applicant will also be required to show the site drainage as well. The rear of the property also contains landscaping where it's sloping. There's nothing actually built there, as well as new trees, new landscaping, and a block retaining wall that sits between the two properties that is to remain. As mentioned earlier, the project applicant is requesting exceptions as well as the designer review permit. The applicant is requesting an exception to the FAR to allow their project to exceed the maximum of 55%. The lot, as mentioned before, contains an area that has steep slope. This is an area of just under 4,400 square feet. Because it slopes over 30%, per zoning code, we can't include that in calculating of the FAR. That means that taking that amount of the square footage from the lot out, the FAR as proposed stands at about 79%. But if that area with the slope was counted along with the whole lot, then the project would be at a much lower 48%. The project otherwise meets all other ground-floor setbacks and the maximum height, and staff does find that it's compatible with the neighborhood in terms of massing and scale. As mentioned earlier, the applicant is also requesting an upper-story setback. This is for the northeast side on that upper story. So the applicant is requesting to exceed the minimum required four feet on the second story. And the proposed upper story, this image kind of shows it where there's that trellis by the tree on the side. It would also almost create an entry for that first story because the first-story wall is inset rather than the second story being set back from the first story. The fourth story is inset in this case. Staff notes that the second-story wall continues on the same line throughout on that second story on that side, and it maintains a 12-foot distance from that side property line throughout. In order to grant the design review permit, the Planning Commission must make the following findings. Number one, that the architectural landscaping and general appearance of the proposed building or structure and grounds are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Number two, that the project complies with all applicable development regulations. Number three, that the project will not cause a significant visual impact to neighboring views from principal rooms of a residence. And number four, that the proposal is not detrimental to the orderly, harmonious, and safe development of the city and will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood in which the building or structure is proposed to be erected. The Planning Commission also has to make the following findings to grant the exception, which are: Number one, that the deviation granted from the minimum required or maximum allowable development standards prescribed for the zoning district in which the project site is located will not be detrimental to property improvements existing upon any abutting parcel. And number two, that the deviation granted from the minimum required or maximum allowable development standards prescribed for the zoning district in which the project site is located at will be compatible with the property and improvements existing or proposed upon the project site. With that said, staff finds that the Planning Commission can make the findings for both the designer review permit and the exception per the Attachment 1. And with that said, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission review the project, consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution, approving the designer review permit application, and an exception request to allow the project to exceed the maximum allowable FAR and an exception to the upper-story side setback to allow the demolition of an existing single-family residence and the construction of a new two-story, single-family residence in the R1 zoning district. That concludes staff's presentation. We are available for any questions, and the project team has their presentation as well.
We'll get into staff, I mean, council questions for staff, but first, is there a storyboard, an architectural board? Usually they have a materials board.
We have it as part of the, as part of one of the sheets on the plan set. I'd have to go and check which sheet it is, but it is there. Sorry.
Okay. And then I noticed the very first page, there's a rendering, but it doesn't seem to match the landscape plan. There's some palm trees, but in the other landscape drawing, there's several other trees called out. Is there a updated rendering?
The applicant could better answer that question, but I believe if we add all the proposed landscaping, then the house itself, you wouldn't get the best view of it. So I think that's why they might have not added those at this point.
And then before I ask for more council questions, there's no drainage plan included in this. A lot of times with the irrigation plan, there's like indications of drainage, and that's a big concern. So was there a drawing in here for the drainage, or is that under a special study?
So that would be at the building permit stage that that would be reviewed at. And yeah, the applicant might have a better answer for that as well, but the building permit stage is when we would ask for that, and both the Building Department and the Public Works Department would be reviewing it at that point.
Okay, let's go with the rest of the council. Are there any questions for staff? Catherine?
If you can explain to me again, I know you mentioned it, the future ADU. Why did they bring it up now if they're not going to proceed with it?
So they will proceed with it. It's that person.
Like when?
Just because of how state law works, the Planning Commission can't make a determination on that portion of it. It's a staff-level review, but I think it was just added there, so we're aware of it.
So they're basically going to do it now. It's just that we have no say on it.
In a way, it's, I think it would come along at the same time as the main house.
Okay.
In terms of construction, yeah.
As far as construction, they are going to do it now. It's just that we can't comment on the.
Exactly.
ADU. Got it. I'm thinking, why would they do it and then do it later? Okay, thank you.
Nathan?
Thanks, Nestor, for the presentation. I wanted to follow up about two claims that the applicant made in their Attachment 3 because neither of these were mentioned in the staff report. So the first claim is that they said that the basement light wall should not be counted in the FAR calculation. What's your opinion of that?
Per zoning code, we do include that as part of the calculation.
Okay. And then the second one is that they specifically called out that the zoning code, and I'm sorry, I didn't look this up myself earlier, but that the zoning code specifically says that FAR exceptions should be granted for lots with a 30% slope or higher.
Oh, that isn't the Exceptions Code of the section. So it basically says that any project like this would require an exception in order for it to be approved.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Anybody else?
I have one question.
Yes. Mr. Quigg?
Wait a minute. Yes, we received this notice late today about the correspondence. I haven't noticed that in the past. I think all you're talking about is if we have met with them, that we have to disclose it.
You could just, a little closer, it's hard to hear.
Okay, so the memo talks about, please be reminded that private meetings with applicants constitute. So does that mean, if I understand correctly, that if we have met with them, we have to disclose it?
Yes, so at the beginning of the hearing, I should clarify, the applicant requested to forward an email to the members of the Planning Commission, and if the Planning Commissioners opted to speak with the applicant as per their correspondence, it would constitute an ex parte conversation. It could be done, but you would have to disclose that at the hearing because the decision before the Planning Commission has to be of the public record, and when you have a private conversation with someone, that's, you know, that would generally be outside of that. So if anyone did, they would have to disclose it. I didn't hear any statements at the beginning of the meeting.
Thought so, but I just thought I'd clarify. Thank you.
Question for Nestor and staff. There's noted an ADU and a JADU in the designs. Can you speak on the allowed additions? Can they have both ADU and JADU?
Yes, per state law, they can have both an attached or detached ADU and then a junior accessory dwelling unit as well.
And then just going over again, the definition and distinction between a JADU versus an ADU. If they can only have one ADU and one JADU, what's the difference?
So the JADU is limited up to 500 square feet is the max, whereas the detached or attached unit can be larger, I think up to 1,000 square feet or so.
Okay, so then these drawings would.
Would meet those numbers, yeah.
Okay.
So similarly to ADUs, the pool and the jacuzzi are noted as deferse semitels. Is that because, A, the Planning Commission do not have proof of those, or is it Plan, Building Department?
That would be a building permit. Submittal. That's why it says, I think it says deferse semitels. Exactly.
Okay, if there's no other questions for staff, then at this point, I'd like to invite the homeowner or homeowner's representative or architect up to the podium and give us an overview of the project and the design distinct, distinct design characteristics of the project.
No, you could just say next slide. It's on the. I'm opening it right now.
And we'd like to invite the homeowner and architect up to give a presentation, after which we'll invite public comment and then may invite you back up to answer questions.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jessica. This is my husband, Mike. We have three daughters. It'll be pictured here. There we go. This is also proof that Nestor did put up the notice of public hearing. Sophie is in kindergarten at Meadows Elementary. Molly, in the red, is in preschool at Millbury Montessori, and Hazel is one and just started walking. I'm a physician at Mills Peninsula, and Mike is an attorney. We moved to Millbury and bought our house in 2015 and really love living in Millbury, but we need a lot more space for our growing family. The pandemic certainly complicated things as neither one of us had dedicated workspace at home. We don't have room for a family to come visit, and Hazel currently sleeps in our closet. So, you know, we, we think that this is, you know, a really good opportunity for us to potentially build our forever home, and we would love to stay in the area. We've considered moving, but we love the neighborhood, we love our friends here, so we're hopeful that we can continue to stay and build our dream home.
So I'll tell you a little bit more about the project. So we've been working with the.
You have to talk right into the mic.
We'll swap then. So we've been working with the planning staff for almost a year now to try and come up with a house that both works for our family but also sort of fits into the neighborhood. We bought the house in part because of the large lot, and we're really grateful that Millbury has that specific exception that we pointed out for sloped lots like ours so that we can build a house that really works for our family. So we've shared our plans with actually 13 neighbors. We personally met with 12 of them. Nearly all of them support our project, other than, as Nestor mentioned, our downhill neighbor. Pam's actually here, I think she's probably going to speak. I've spoken with her a number of times about the pool. I've also offered to let her speak with our engineers, our architect. As we mentioned, the pool is deferred submittal, but because she's expressed concerns, we actually brought a number of our team members, some of our engineers, our landscape contractor, there's some people on Zoom, so they're here to answer questions if you guys have them, even though that part of the project is deferred submittal. Because we're working on a lot like ours, it's really important to us that we hired a qualified team, and we wanted to make sure we had people who had experience working on hillside lots. So the other thing I wanted to point out, just a couple days ago, another neighbor reached out to us. I thought he was going to come speak, maybe he's online. He had expressed some concern about our, part of our roof blocking his view. The reason for the roof at the moment is because we need the space for solar panels. As you know, with this new house, it has to be almost entirely electric, but I'm working with, I talked with Jeremy. I told him that as we finalize the solar plans, as we get further into the process, we could consider trying to decrease that roof to minimize the visual impact on them. But yeah, we really appreciate that you're considering this project, and I'm going to turn it over to our architect to tell you a little bit more.
Good evening, Commissioners. Since I don't have the clicker, I hope you'll get some extra time because I was planning to just fly through the presentation a little bit. So if you can go next slide. I would like to thank the Commissioners, and I would really like to thank Nestor and the planning staff. They have been working with us and really guiding us to make sure that the project in front of you really works with what the city wants, what our clients want, and what we could be proud of. This is the site. We can go to the next slide. Just real quickly, our proposed structure, we just wanted to show you, the purple is the existing home. We tried to put our proposed structure right where the existing house is to minimize the grading and impact on the site. You can go next. You can go next. We worked with the staff since over a year, more informal discussions and meetings, just to make sure that they were comfortable. They have been guiding us throughout the process. As our clients mentioned, they have a growing family and we were trying to make sure that they get what they want, the city is happy with what they have, and then we could be proud of where we are. And they've done extensive neighborhood outreach. Go next. This is the existing site. We can go to the next slide. As you can see, we have a very diverse neighborhood, different architectural styles from 1950s to 80s to 1990. And now what we call as post-COVID era, we are designing for families which unfortunately have to work from home as well as live at home. So we came up with a design that we think really blends in with the neighborhood. We were focused to make sure that the mass and bulk of the building was really minimized. And we wanted something which still holds its own, looks new, but it still is not something that is not in line with what's happening in the neighborhood. We can go to the next slide. This is the backyard. I think there was a discussion about landscaping that the commissioners had brought up. We can go to the next slide. We superimposed our project into this. As you can see on the left of our property, there are some natural vegetation, which some of these trees, by the way, since we took this picture, are gone because of the storm. But on the right side, you can see it's very bare. But our clients really wanted to make sure that we were looking at the property holistically. Our landscape architecture team is here to answer any questions you have. They have been working hand in hand with the planning staff to address the privacy needs for the neighbors and for our clients. And we want to be very sustainable. It's a big site, so all the vegetation you see, most of it is drought tolerant, so we can minimize the usage of water. We can look at the next slide. This is the landscaping plan, which is already in your package. Again, our team is here. They have been super amazing in working with the planning staff. So if you have any questions specifically to that, they'll be happy to answer. You can go to the next slide. This is, again, the view currently on the bottom right, looking at our neighbor down below, and we are proposing these privacy screening, just so that our clients can have privacy and so can the neighbor. Next slide. Now, in front of you, we are looking at the two exceptions. So I'll just dive into the next slide. The second story, I thought it would be a little bit easier to kind of explain. This area in blue is the second story setback exception. If you go to the next slide, you can see on the first floor, this area is actually a little sheltered between the living room and the mudroom. We created this space because nowadays, as we all know, we have Amazon packages being delivered, which are left out front and people are kind of freaking out about it. So this is an area where safely the packages could be left. And also because they have young kids, this is one area which is away from the pool and the downhill slope that the kids can play outside. You go to the next slide. While the people in the house can still see this area and still have that eye contact with the kids. And now in the next slide, you'll see that we believe this exception is granted and is something that you should be able to support because this area is actually, on both sides, we have proposed second story that you can see is encompassing this, so it is not visibly impacting anybody. Next slide. I'll just go to the next. This, as Nestor shared, we have this, over 38% of our area is over 30% slope. And that's why we have this impact on the square footage. The calculation you have in front of you, we are just saying that the 963 square foot of basement area is all below ground. So from our purposes, what we have in front of you and what the impact is, is basically above ground, which is 691 square feet. And out of that 525 square feet is that double height space, which the city calculates above nine feet, that we have to calculate. So it's not that our bulk and square footage is big on the footprint. If you go to the next slide, I'll just quickly go through this. This is the basement, as you can see, fully below ground. Next slide. Again, with the double height space, you can see we still maintained our overall height and everything, so we don't believe that's an impact on any of the neighbors. Next slide. We can just go through because I'm keeping an eye on the time here. These are just some examples we put together of what we've seen other projects in the area, which are similar square footage as our property or maybe bigger than ours. And this was just as a reference point for the commission, because I know you guys can't drive around and just look at every project. So we just spent time to just, did this investigation, just so you guys have some reference point. Next slide. Now, we did, as our clients have already talked about, that we have a neighbor who's very concerned about the grading and drainage. This is taken care of at building department side, but we have Jason Kahn from Murray Engineers, Peter, our structural engineer, and Pete Carlino from Lee &amp; Bray's on call and in person here, as well as our landscape team. We are, all of us in the team are actually experts at building on hillside. That's mostly most of our projects. And that's why this team is together. So we have been very careful on how we will be taking care of the grading and drainage issues on this site. But if you have any questions or if the neighbors have any questions, you all are available to answer that in depth. Next slide. I will just go to the last, if you can go forward, and just there. That's it. No. Perfect. So I know you have to do the findings, and we believe we have met all the findings for this project. And the reason is that we have no impact on the neighbors. Our square footage that we are asking the exception on is if you take the basement out, which actually has no impact on any of the neighbors, we actually comply with all these four findings and with the exception. But I just wanted to make sure I was being very careful about the time. If you have any questions or concerns, we all are here to answer them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We may, we'll ask for the comments and we may call you back up, but are there any, I see any questions yet for the architect at this time? Okay, given none. Yeah, so we have one question.
Can you, can you go back to the slide that showed the building footprint? And you were saying that it's the same.
Similar?
The same as the house, the current house?
It's a similar area, yes. Go back. I think very few of the first ones. Right there. So in the purple, you can see that's the existing house footprint. And then the blue is, where you can see is the, and now we are only taking care of the first floor footprint of the house. So we just wanted to show where they extend.
Okay. But then the JADU goes out, proposed JADU.
Correct, that's lower, on the lower half.
Oh, okay.
It's not on the same floor.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Actually, I had one question also. For the, one of the ground floor drawing, it showed the front entrance going down into the, going into the ADU. So I was a little bit confused about the access for the house. Is that front door, it's on A 1.05?
We have a, here, so I can pull that up.
Right there. So the.
So the front entrance is right next to the garage.
Right. And then it says ADU entry right there in the front of the house. So I was wondering if that has access to the house or to the.
No, to the ADU.
Okay. And then, so where's the main entrance for the primary residence? Left side, so they would walk.
Correct.
On the side of the house and then go into the.
Into the main house.
Main house, through the foyer. Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'd like to welcome neighbor and public comments.
Opening the public hearing.
Yes. Okay, so we have one speaker slip here in the room for Pam Brewster. Pam, I'd like to welcome you to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Pam Brewster. I, my address is 1336 Ridgewood Drive. I believe that I am the only neighbor that has voiced opposition to the proposed massive project at 1343 Terrace Drive. Considering the fact I am the major property affected by this project with regards to safety concerns, amongst other concerns, obviously, I am looking at this situation from a much different perspective than my neighbors. Simply, my home is directed at the very base of this extremely steep hillside. I have had a number of concerns I have shared with the planning department. But my most egregious concern is the possibility of a swimming pool being located above my home. I've done a great deal of research on hillside pools. There's many pros and cons. Overall, I've come across nothing that has alleviated my fears in any way whatsoever. My home is my most valuable asset. And I truly feel this pool situation could very well have innate negative impact on its value. But worst of all, I will never again have a sense or feeling of safety, peace, or tranquility in my home if this pool project were approved to go forward. In closing, at one time, there were a fair number of very tall trees existing on this hillside. They generated a great deal of angst with heavy winds. And thankfully, they have been removed over the years. However, a swimming pool would be a 24/7, 365 day a year ongoing threat for me. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other?
Yes, there's one hand raised on Zoom. Jeremy Ng, will you please come off mute? Jeremy Ng?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, yeah. My name is Jeremy. I am the neighbor at 1347 Terrace Drive. Mike had actually mentioned me in his comments. I just wanted to voice our concerns as the direct neighbor to Mike and Jessica. While we support their desire to build their forever home, to support their growing family, one of the concerns that we had as their neighbors, which I brought up a few days ago after seeing the marker poles that were set up earlier this month, was that the extension of the back patio and the covered portion of the back patio is impacting our view or will impact our view. And so we just wanted to go on record as voicing our concern over that. Again, we support Mike and Jessica in building their forever home, but we will also be impacted for the next, you know, 18 months, two years for the construction period. And with particularly the extension of the back patio, which has a covered roof. Originally, it was explained to us that that would not impact our view, but with the marker poles that are there, that are currently there, we can see exactly where the planned roof line will be, and it significantly impacts the portion of the view that we currently have. And that's all the comments I have.
Jordan, please come off mute and state your full name for the record, please.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right. My name is Jordan Ho. Thanks for the opportunity to raise comments. So I live in Millbury with my wife and our five and three-year-old girls. We've known Jess and Mike for a couple of years. Our older daughters, Molly and my old one, Lolo, they went to the same preschool. So, and my wife works at home and I work at home, so I understand the place Mike and Jess are coming from. So we share the desire to improve our living situation, similar to Mike and Jess. At first, that also means upgrading a dated property and creating a more functional home. The truth of the matter is the situation for a lot of families changed in the past several years. More are working at home. Don't feel that's a negative. I see a positive there because we can spend a lot more time with our families. But some of our homes don't accommodate that very well. And that's just the truth. They were designed during a different era when families weren't like they are today. They were a little smaller, a little more basic, and that was fine then. It doesn't work that well today. And whether there's an opportunity to change that, to make a home more suitable or comfortable and more multipurpose, we should be supportive. We have little girls that will, as much as we don't want them to, grow up very, very quickly. We want them to do that in Millbury. We love it living here. You just heard Mike and Jess say they love it in here. And trust me, when I say we, my wife and I, we visit a lot of homes around the area looking for a forever home. And Millbury is where we want to be for a long, long time. We see this city's potential, but a big part of that is having a home that provides the safety, space, and convenience and comfort for our needs. That's what we want. I think that's what Jess and Mike want. I think that's what all of us want. Jess and Mike are good people. They'll do this safely. They eat Millbury, they shop Millbury, and they go to the Millbury schools. We can see this schematics, but if you look past those sketches and the renderings, we can see that they designed a home that they wanted to be in for a really long time. They said their forever home in Millbury. It would be heartbreaking on a personal level, but really for the city of Millbury, if families like Jess and Mike's feel that Millbury isn't keeping up and they feel they need to leave. That's it. Thank you for your time.
There are no other hands raised.
Okay. Last call, anybody else in the room or online? Okay, thank you for the comments. Can we have a vote to close public comment? Or a motion to close public comment? Oh, should we do that first before we close public comment? Okay, well, we would ask questions to the architect after we close public comment? Andrew, should we close public comment or invite, and then questions for the architect? Or should we?
You can leave public comment open as the architect or applicant provides a rebuttal that's typical. And then after they're finished before deliberation, then you would close the public comment.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go with that then. So we invite now the architect to go to the podium to address the issues of neighbors.
So as we had mentioned earlier, I'd like to talk about Jeremy's project right next door. We were just made aware of that this week and we've, and Michael and Jess have already talked with him. We are really sensitive. We want to make sure that the neighbors are happy. And as we are getting into the building department process and solar panels, we are going to be working with the solar team and working with Jeremy and their family to see if we can actually reduce that roof structure a little bit to hopefully make them happy and make our clients happy. That is something that I can't give a definite answer right now because we haven't had the time to work with the solar company as yet with the amount of solar panels we need to put up there. But we are already aware of it and our clients have already given us the authorization to make sure that we work as a team to reduce that roof if we can. So we will be definitely working with the neighbor and the planning staff to hopefully address that during the building submittal process.
Mike's on.
So the person that spoke was on the west side?
I believe it's the west side, yes. Sorry, just thinking a little bit, yeah.
So is, is he concerned about the roof or is he concerned?
So there is a, if we go on the roof plan or the second floor plan, you'll see the covered patio.
Yes.
The roof over that covered patio.
Is what he's concerned about.
Yes. And since that's the area that has been identified by the solar company to be able to put solars on that side, that's why we just want to work with them to see how we can still keep the same capacity, but use the panel somewhere else if possible and then reduce it. That's the roof he's talking about.
Thank you.
And then to answer the question from the other neighbor, we have been aware of that and we know that there is a lot of anxiety and stress from the neighbor regarding the swimming pool and the retaining walls and the grading and drainage. And I know it is difficult when there is a change and it's, of course, very difficult for them to see where we are coming from. But let me tell you, Pete Carlino and the entire team, which is online right now, ready to answer questions, we all have been doing pools, homes. to answer questions, we all have been doing pools, homes on the hillside. The area is all hilly, most of it. And we, in all our years of working, we work hard that things don't go wrong. And the reason is, it's not in our clients' benefit to spend that money and have something go wrong. The city has very strict requirements. The state has very strict codes that we all follow. But if there are any questions that we can help answer right now, our team is online and they can. But we will be addressing all these comments during building department phase. It is a very intense process that we go through to make sure that the city is comfortable with what we are proposing.
After I read her letter, I was concerned, and I thought, whoa. So I did go up, and I did drive the street several times. And even though there is a steep slope, it's not quite like this, and it is more gradual than you think it is, and I'm just looking at it from a novice's point of view. And first, I finished reading all this stuff when I got in the car, and I went up and looked right away. But after seeing it, I'm not as concerned, although I'm sure the neighbor is concerned.
Of course, and that's what we are saying, that we would not even have, even if our clients wanted a pool and we thought it was not safe, we would have pushed against it. We all have our liabilities attached to it. We all are very comfortable with what we are proposing. And as you see, we've actually tucked the pool right where the junior ADU and the house foundation system is just for that reason. But again, if there's any technical questions that anybody has, we have the rest of the team to answer that.
Nathan?
Yeah, so I'm looking at page 8203 if anyone else is interested. So the, so with that, there's also a stone wall underneath the, at least in this rendering of the patio. So with that, if, you know, you mentioned that you might take the roof out if the solar capacity is sufficient, but then what?
Yeah. So sorry, but we won't be taking the roof out. We'll be reducing the roof area.
Okay.
So that hopefully it can work for the neighbor, can work for the solar capacity that we need, and it'll still have a covered patio, but we'll try and reduce it so that the impact is less.
Okay. Thanks.
So I'd like to just clarify with staff at this point, for the purposes of the planning commission here, if we were to approve of the design plans, but it's still subject, the swimming pool would still be subject to a building permit and conditions of the building department, then are we essentially just approving of the design plans, but it's not completely said that the swimming pool is still subject to design constraints or the city's permit?
Yeah, so the decision tonight would be specific to the design review permit, the design review of the house, and then the exception requests. The swimming pool and those deferred submittals would be evaluated and reviewed at the building permit stage, which would be later on.
So it's not really under our purview to allow the permit for the swimming pool or even just any design of a swimming pool?
No, swimming pools are not under the purview of the planning commission. People come in for swimming pool permits all the time. You don't review those. They're at the staff level, you know, it's independent of the house.
Okay. I think that, I'm not sure how much time we should be spending on this swimming pool if it's subject to a review of the building department, but it is an interesting question. I'm not sure we really need to take up that big discussion here. So the real issue before us is approving of a design permit with the exceptions for the FAR and for the setback on the site, right? We are very concerned, and you know, as community and neighbors, we understand the concern about swimming pool. But that might be, needs to be taken up with the, during the design phase and with the engineering department, too. Okay, so given that, do we have design questions for the architect?
I have a motion to close the public comment.
We need to close the public.
Okay.
Before we close, Jeremy Ng has his hand up again. If, oh, you will allow it?
Yes.
Okay, Jeremy, go ahead and come off mute.
All right, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I just raised my hand when Ms. Quigg had brought up the concern, or wanted clarification on what my concern was, and yes, it is the, the primary concern is the roofline of that patio extension. That's the main concern. That's what is currently in our line of sight, as the markers at least indicate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. If that's it for the public comment then, do we have a motion to close public comment? Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, end of vote?
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. Public comment is now closed.
Okay, we appreciate everybody's input and comments from the neighbors. We'll move on to council discussion. Sam, would you like to start?
Well, I want to start by saying, I want to commend the landscape design. I think it's very appropriate. I don't know who the landscape, the species are great in this neighborhood, especially for slopes, so. And I want to commend the applicant for hiring a qualified team of professionals who have done design on slopes, knowing that, and knowing that the geotechnical and engineering aspect of the project will be deferred and reviewed by the building department. I'm comfortable with the design. I think it's a brilliant move to, the programming's done fantastic. I think it's a brilliant move to relocate the main entrance, which is typically at the front of the house to the side to address what the users, the future users will need. So good job on that.
Okay, let's jump to the other side. Commissioner Chan? Comments, thoughts?
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a very compelling project. In terms of the two exception requests, I have no objection to them. The setback on the northeast side makes sense to me. You know, the FAR, I've always found FAR to be a little weird, especially if there's building height and setback requirement and lot coverage requirements already. So, and yeah, and if it's specifically called out within our own zoning code that there's a contemplation of slope lots being, be, some kind of workaround for slope lots, then I think that makes sense to me. So yeah, I have no problem with the exception requests.
I have no comment.
Okay. Commissioner Davis?
It's a beautiful design. This house is, what's on?
Yeah.
It's a beautiful design. You couldn't build a nicer house for what you need to do. You've used the lot very effectively, very efficiently, and still got everything in that you need. I agree with the landscaping plan. I loved, I saw some native plants in there on that hillside especially. That would be ideal. What else? My notes are always so scattered, but beautiful design, and the pool is not in our purview. I'm sorry, so that, all of that will be taken care of. They'll have all the experts out to make sure it's going to be okay. And the reason we have the opportunity for exceptions is for this, because every property is unique, and we have to look at each project, and I'm fine with the exceptions as well. So thank you.
I really appreciate, you know, the level of effort that goes into projects like this, and the commitment and the investment made in our communities to, you know, envision, you know, upgrades to our communities and, you know, really welcoming for new families with new, modern ideas and update our neighborhoods that are, you know, 70, 80 years old that, you know, can use more dressing and updates. I think that, just a few nitpicky items, I know that for your consideration, just try to add value to your project and give you more thought. I'd really like to see the final landscape rendering and the house rendering when it comes before the commission. You know, there's a lot of grasses there, but in the planting plan, it looks like it's a lot more drought tolerant and more trees in the front yard, so that would add, I think, really a different characteristic of the house. This is north-facing, so I know sometimes people recess the front door a little bit in an alcove, so they should be lighting in there to brighten it up and make it brighter and more welcoming. If there is entrance on the left side of the house, you might think about the walkway and ease of access so it doesn't become a tripping hazard. I know that sometimes these stones or pavers or concrete steps are a little tricky, especially for ADA access. If it is that large of an expansion, it's amazing that, you know, nowadays, we're really, state of California and all the cities are under a mandate to allow expansions and provide more housing, but with that also consider parking issues and make sure driveways and parking spaces are sufficient for these additional units. And then just, you know, I think we always say, you know, the details are what makes the house, too. So think about window dressings or any other details in the facade might go well. But I'd really like to point out, I guess, the landscaping, there is that big slope in the backyard. And then with the planting plan, you might consider a lot more measures for safety. If you do have any dewatering of a pool or runoff from a pool, make sure you have a planting plan that provides slope stability and hillside stability. And then that may work into the drainage plan if there's a drainage plan needed for the pool, you know, emergency drainage plan or regular drainage plan, so that if you're emptying the pool or somehow some, you know, during heavy rainstorm events like this, you know, there's, it's always a concern anyways with these hillsides. So think about a planting plan that can mitigate that or address that, and then work into your contingency plans if you ever have to dewater the pool for regular purposes or for an emergency. Okay, so those are just some thoughts, comments. It's interesting also, the roof pitch. I think a lot of the other homes are a little bit more flat. So something to look out for, staff to have a little bit more neighborhood characteristics to match the neighboring houses. Look to me just from the rendering here, that it's a little bit different from the other neighboring houses. Given that, you know, like I mentioned before, it's a big investment, there's a lot of people working on the house, there's always, you know, with these people, more people, they come up with ideas to try to mitigate and address issues, so it's like your team's done a good job trying to address everyone's issue. I appreciate that for our community. So with that, any further comments? Okay, do we have a motion? Commissioner Chan?
I move that we approve the resolution of the planning commission of the city of Millbury to approve the design review permit to allow the demolition of an existing single-family residence and the construction of a new 5,510 square foot, two-story, single-family residence, an exception request to allow the project to exceed the maximum allowed floor area ratio and an exception to the upper story side setback in the single-family residence R1 zoning district at 1343 Terrace Drive.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kristi, can we have a votes?
Commissioner Choi?
Aye.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, the action of the planning commission is considered final pending a 10-day appeal period and the payment of the required appeal fee. For anyone that wishes to appeal the decision of the planning commission, please contact City Clerk at the number 650-259-2414, or etran@sci.milbury.ca.us. With appeal process questions, or visit the city of Millbury website for more information. Thank you. We thank all the people who came out to participate in that review process, and we invite you to continue your discussion while we resume our progress inside here. So moving on to public hearing, item 4A, we'll jump back to our regularly scheduled items. This is for 105 North Rollins Road, a public hearing on a conditional use permit application to allow bank use, Liberty Bank in the Millbury area, Millbury Station area-specific plan, TOD, Transit Oriented Development Zoning District. Okay. And Jennifer?
Good evening, Chair Wong and members of the planning commission, Jennifer Lim, Assistant Planner with the city of Millbury. And tonight, I will be presenting the project located at 105 North Rollins Road, and this is for a public hearing on a conditional use permit application to allow a bank use, Liberty Bank, in the Millbury Station area-specific plan, Transit Oriented Development Zoning So this map shows the project's location. The project is located on the east side of the BART station. The zoning code designation for 105 North Rollins Road is Transit Oriented Development in the Millbury Station area-specific plan, and the existing building is five stories, about 123,709 square feet. The ground floor tenant space is about 2,525 square feet, and the project proposal is for a new bank, Liberty Bank, to operate within a leased tenant space in the gateway at Millbury Station. So this site plan shows the location of Liberty Bank in light blue, and the bank will be located on one of the ground floor spaces in the existing Residence Inn by Marriott Hotel. There is also parking available in the rear. So here's the front elevation. The interior and tenant improvements will be made, and an exterior ATM is being proposed on the right side as shown on the screen. The proposed hours of operation for the bank will be Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and the ATM will be available 24/7. So the Millbury Station area-specific plan requires banks and financial services to secure a conditional use permit when located on the ground floor in a type 1, very active ground floor uses area in which 105 North Rollins Road is located in. Liberty Bank will provide routine personal and commercial services, such as checking, savings, and financing. The bank will operate during standard banking hours, and the proposed bank will serve businesses and residential clients within the gateway at Millbury Station and the surrounding community. In order to approve the conditional use permit, the planning commission must make the following findings. Number one, the establishment maintenance. Number one, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the use applied for will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use. And number two, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the use applied for will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the property and improvements in the neighborhood of such proposed use. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission receive the presentation, review the project, consider the public testimony, and approve the conditional use permit subject to the findings in the resolution and attachment 1, and subject to the conditions of approval to allow a bank use, Liberty Bank, in the Millbrae Station area specific plan, Transit Oriented Development Zoning District. Staff is available for any questions as well as the applicant.
Okay, do we have any questions from the commissioners for staff?
So probably showing a bit of ignorance on my part, I'm surprised that a bank would require a conditional use permit. Is that, is it because of its topology? Are there other types of businesses or uses that would require CUP?
So the main reason that cities require CUPs is so that it's, sometimes it's difficult to differentiate a traditional bank like this from, say, a short-term, high-interest loan business or a check cashing business. And so that's the main reason why is just to make sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, from the chair's notes, we have notes that Gary Wong, CBRE Project Manager, and Eric Christensen, Construction Representative for Republic Urban, are joined via Zoom. If we could have a statement from the project manager, welcome Gary Wong.
Yes, hello, this is Gary Wong.
Yes, if you could just provide an overview of your project and the type of business that you're proposing for this location?
Yeah, my client is obviously Liberty Bank. I think they're based, right now they're based off of, in Southern California, but they also have a branch in South San Francisco. And they're just looking to expand. This, this, this bank will be their first one, first, sorry, like brand-new construction bank for this, for this team. Yeah, as Jennifer was saying, that, you know, they'll just provide savings, checkings, and thanks for the, for the community. And I think that's about it. I'm not sure what else to say.
Any commissioner questions? For the project, we have limited information here. Is there going to be an outdoor ATM or is it any issues where people would have to stop really quick and run into an ATM and make withdrawals or any other parking restrictions or modifications? Or how will it impact business in that specific location? Do you foresee any special features of this business like that?
Yes, it is an exterior ATM. The parking is on the opposite side, so they would have to park on the opposite side and then come around to utilize the ATM. I believe that's the main road, or that's Rollins Road, where that is.
And the parking and striping on the road right adjacent to the bank, do, do we have knowledge, is it red parking, emergency parking?
I just want to remind the Planning Commission that under state law, you can't require parking within a, I think it's a quarter mile or a half mile of high-quality transit, so they're not required to have any parking.
But the question is, is, I guess, is there a red zone in front of the building or is it?
They would not be able to have, there's no parking on Rollins Road at all.
Okay, okay, no parking.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Catherine?
Is there parking on the back side? I think there is parking on the back side, isn't there?
There is parking behind the building, yes.
Behind the building? And is that door open in the back or?
I'll let the applicant answer that question.
Yes, there's a, there's, there's two entries, two entrances. Yes, if you, yes, if you look, there's park, there's parking there. I believe it's mainly for the hotel, but I want to say that people could park there. And then the ATM is on, actually on that, where the tree line area is on the opposite side. So you scroll down to, do you see where 119 is? Below 119, that's the Liberty Bank 105. Yep, that's the one.
Is that it?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Do we have any motions? Oh, thank you. Let's go with the, Kristi mentioned, public hearing. Are there any persons wishing to speak on this agenda item here in the room or online?
There are no hands raised or slips. Eric, if you want to speak, you can just go ahead and unmute yourself, you're a panelist.
Perfect, thank you so much. Good evening, all. Just on behalf of the Millbrae Gateway Development Ownership Group, I just want to express our excitement to have Liberty Bank become a tenant within our Marriott Residence Inn Hotel building. It's going to be a great use for them. We have a lot of people coming into this center, either living within the complex or working nearby. And actually, to answer a question from a moment ago, the parking in the rear of the space is labeled as retail currently right now, so it's all set up. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you for answering that. Motion to close public comments?
So moved.
No questions? Nathan?
What?
Do you have a question?
No, no, I was, I was saying I was moving the motion you suggested.
Okay, we have a motion by Nathan and a second by Commissioner Quigg.
Commissioner Choi?
Aye.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Yes.
Thank you, public comment is now closed.
Okay. Any further discussion, items, comments?
I'll make a quick comment.
Sure.
Be a great addition to the development, going to be useful to the residents there, on the entire residence, both buildings, the visitors of the place, to the transit people, and to people in the hotel. Fabulous ad. And I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Millbrae approving an additional use permit application to allow a bank use, Liberty Bank, in the Millbrae Station area specific plan, Transit Oriented Development Zoning District at 105 North Rollins Road.
Second? I'm sorry.
Okay, one more time. Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Welcome to the community. And per script, action of the Planning Commission is considered final pending 10-day appeal period and payment of the required appeal fee. Anyone that wishes to appeal the decision of the Planning Commission, please contact City Clerk with appeal process questions or visit City of Millbrae website. Thank you. Moving on, a couple more items here on the agenda, so we will go with item 4C. This is for 959 El Camino Real, public hearing on a master sign program for the mixed-use development in the Corridor Mixed Use CMU zoning district. And Nestor?
Before Nestor starts, can, do we, I'd want to make an ex parte disclosure. So back when this, when this 959 El Camino Real project was being proposed in 2022, I did participate in some discussions at Housing Leadership Council to endorse that project.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, Nestor?
All right, good evening, thank you Chair Wong and good evening again, planning commissioners. I'm Nestor Guevara, I'll be presenting the master sign program for the 959 El Camino Real project. As wave background, you would have, you've seen this item before. It was approved by the Planning Commission back in June of 2022. And it's a development for a, for a mixed-use project containing 278 residential units as well as over 17,000 square feet of ground floor commercial space, as well as adjoining parking for those uses. The applicant is now seeking a master sign program that directs users to the residential parking and commercial uses in the development. This map just shows the location of the project. You should be well familiar with it. It's on the corner of El Camino Real and Meadow Glen Avenue, and it's the site of what was formerly the Office Depot. A master sign program, it's, it's required for all new multi-tenant projects such as this one. It's a program that provides a coordinated signage program for larger projects. So the master of the sign program details the proposed signage for the residential, commercial, and parking uses for the development, and includes information such as the sign locations, the size of the signs themselves, and then any lighting for the signage. Staff notes that any sign, any individual building tenant would need to obtain a building permit for their specific signage. This slide here just shows kind of the ground floor layout for the development. The blocks that you see in green are the commercial units, and those are found mostly on the west, which is Broadway, and then the south, which is the Paseo. The north side, which is Meadow Glen Avenue, features leasing and office, the leasing office and residential parking, entry and exit, as well as the leasing lobby. And then on the east, which is the El Camino Real side, we find the primary parking entrance for the commercial space, but also has access to that residential area as well. This slide here just shows the maximum allowable square footage for the signage for each side of the building. With Broadway being the, what's considered the primary frontage, it's allowed more square footage for signage as compared to the other sides of the building. Staff notes that the, the project, the master sign program before you complies to the maximum allowable square footage for each of the sides, or for all of the sides, I should say. And just going through the elevations really quickly, this is the El Camino Real side of the project. As mentioned, it contains the primary parking entrance, so much of the signage is around there. There is some commercial signage on the corner with the Paseo. And then there is one larger sort of blade sign with the address of the, of the development as well. The Meadow Glen Avenue side, it contains the leasing lobby as well as the other parking entrance for the residential and the, and the leasing space. But it also does contain a little bit of commercial unit signage at the corner with Broadway. And moving along to Broadway, which contains most of the commercial units for the project, basically all of the signage on this side, I think with the exception of one for the residential entrance, is for the commercial units, whether it's wall signage, matrellis signage, or blade signage. And then finally, the Paseo side, similarly to the Broadway side, mostly features commercial signage again, whether it's on a trellis, a window, or, or the, the hanging or blade signs. With that said, staff's recommendation tonight is that the Planning Commission review the project, consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the master sign program for a mixed-use development in the corridor, for a master sign program for the mixed-use development in the Corridor Mixed Use Zoning District, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation. Were available for questions? And the applicant is here as well.
Okay, any commissioner questions for staff? Okay, when I was reviewing this, Nestor, I pulled out the, you know, Millbrae Downtown El Camino Real specific plan, and I was looking at some of our prior planning about any notes about signage. There's a small section about wayfinding and building signage, and then there's also some other statements in here about characteristic of our city and so forth. Question for staff is what were the key considerations for review and standards for, when you reviewed this signage?
So one of the major considerations, I would say, was, as you mentioned, the wayfinding, making sure that the signage is in the correct location, the appropriate amount of signage in the correct location to guide users, whether it's to, to parking, or if they're pedestrians to the commercial, or if they live there to the, to the residential, or if they're guests. So we looked at the location for the signage, the amount of signage per, per each, per each unit, and where it was located as well was, was another major consideration. And finally, kind of keeping the consistency of the size of the different signs, just to make sure that, that it's consistent basically in terms of size, lighting and everything throughout, throughout, throughout the project, so for all four sides.
And were comments sufficiently addressed from the staff by the?
Yes, they were.
Okay. Okay, at this point, in the chair notes, we have noticed that representatives from the projects are in attendance. And we have somebody from the project team online, is there somebody from the project team that's, have someone listed, Margot Sumolts from Trammell Crow? Oh, you're in person. Welcome to the Planning Commission.
Hi, thank you so much for your time. Nestor did a great job explaining the project. Obviously, you're familiar with the project. Recognize a few of you from our entitlements back in 2022, so we're excited to move forward the permitting process. We've been working closely with city staff to try to start this project this year. We also have our signage consultant online to answer any specific questions about the program, but I think we, you know, we think it's thoughtful and flexible for future retail tenants and, and for our residents as well.
Okay, questions from council members? Nathan?
Yeah, I, there's a growing awareness of the issue of light pollution, and so there were a couple of, so I guess more broad from a high-level view across all the different sign types, is there any sort of plan for how long the signs would be turned on for any kind of hours where they might be shut off to allow like darkness to settle in for, you know, ecological benefit?
Yeah, and maybe I can have Casey from our team talk about the light and, and potential impact on light pollution. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Casey Bills. So it's very typical that you would put these signs on a timer and have a dimming system to alleviate any light pollution, and that would be, that's very standard across all projects, so that would be something that would get employed here as well. If there are specific requirements that need to be met in terms of reducing light at certain hours, we can factor that into the, into the program.
Okay, thanks, that's, that's great to hear. One specific sign that was, I was a little bit more concerned about also was sign type 3, which it seems like it's that the sign would be lit from below, so then if the light weren't directed correctly, it would shine up into the sky. Most of the other signs I saw, they were either coming out of the sign or there was one other exterior limited lit sign, 10, but it looked like that was coming, pointing down. So I don't know if there's anything special we can do to mitigate some of the potential light pollution effects of sign type 3.
Sure. So sign type three is just at the residential entry, like a secondary residential entry, and it wasn't intended to have any kind of, it's mostly ambient lighting that is supposed to be illuminating that. It's not a direct light that's supposed to be cast on that.
Okay, thanks. One other thing I remember from the at the entitlement hearing was that I remember the adjacent property owners were concerned about parking spillover for commercial users. People, patrons of your of the of the ground floor retail on Broadway would might spill over until Millbury Square. Is there a plan for how to direct people to, if you want to park, there's the parking entrances on El Camino?
Yeah, so the signing, we were thoughtful about that in terms of making it clear that the retail tenants were clearly identified from El Camino, so that it's it's clear that you would park in in those and inside the building for for those retail.
Great, thanks. That's all my questions.
I understand that it is important with not too much, but you are going to have residents around there, so we have to make sure that I'd rather have a few more lights than not enough.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. Anybody else? Sam?
I just want to make a comment to say that I think the design of the font type and the signage is very appropriate and compatible with the architecture. I think it'll be clear from afar, so it'll help with wayfinding substantially, not just for the neighbors, but for people who are who are using patronizing the businesses at the building. Good job.
Okay. Any comments? Maureen? Yes.
I'm just excited. Last week, we looked at something, and this week, we're looking at the master sign plan, so I'm getting excited. And you're saying, start this year, and I'm thinking, okay.
That's what we're trying to do. Yeah, we're working really hard to try to, you know, get the funding lined up.
It's just such a sore blighted little store there that I'm really excited to get started.
Yeah, I think it's very positive for our community, mixed use, residential, commercial. Yes, the question I have, though, is that, you know, a lot of our guidelines for our city, and now this is probably an anchor for our downtown community, being both on Broadway and El Camino. One thing that we've been striving for is to have, you know, character for our community, and we have a theme. You see all the palm trees, and, you know, we have city colors, like on our city logo here, red, yellow, et cetera. So can you talk about the considerations that were given towards distinguishing the facility, or, you know, you want it to be unique and stand out, but also talk about if it how it will blend in with the community, with the palm trees, with the surrounding community, or and or is there possibilities for, you know, slight variations in color to match our city colors with some of the signage, so that we're not just like every other community that's putting in big box stores and regular commercial? So is there possibilities of considerations given towards that? Is there somebody from your team that can address that?
I can speak to the signage design. We worked with Trammell Crowe to develop an identity for this project, and One Meadow Glen is the name, and thinking through, like Samuel mentioned, the typography and the color palette that would work for that identity. Now, on the exterior of the building, we thought it was really important to have this architecturally integrated and give gave deference to the architectural palette, and so that is what we're doing with the exterior signage, that is residential focus signage. I, in terms of incorporating color palette of this city, I think that's something we could further explore, but it was really about giving the the ownership to the building and using that architectural palette. There is sort of a Spanish modernism to the to the architecture, and we tried to have that come through in the identity as well, which I do think plays well with the city of Millbury identity.
I appreciate you recognizing that Spanish modernism. But yeah, I'd encourage staff to continue to work with the developers to give more of our city distinction, character, identity, because, you know, there's been sayings that, you know, as we get into this age, you know, a lot of the big box stores come in, and then they start looking very similar. But we have palm trees, right? So we want to build off of that in our Spanish colonial architecture theme and Mediterranean theme. Okay, with that, is there any further thoughts, questions, comments?
Do you do public comment? You did and did.
Hey.
I don't remember saying any hands or anything. You did that?
Okay, let's do that. Let's go to public comment. Kristi.
There are no slips and no hands raised on Zoom.
Move to closer public comment.
Second.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Yes.
Thank you. Public comment is now closed.
Okay, looks like I jumped into discussion pretty early, so further discussion, comments?
I'll make a tag off of his comments. I don't agree at all that you need to tag into Millbury's colors. This is a unique building. The retailers will have their own colors that go with them, their own brands, and you have a brand. I don't encourage you at all to do that. You've already done a very thoughtful process that makes sense for your building. It's a private property, and it's not a City of Millbury building, and shouldn't be designed as if it were. Otherwise, it's fabulous.
Okay, that's why we have five commissioners to give community input. Any other? Okay, given that, do we have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Millbury approving the master sign program for mixed use development in the corridor mixed use zone.
Second. Commissioner Choi?
Aye.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion approved, five zero.
Okay, master sign program. The action of the Planning Commission is considered final. Congratulations. Thank you. Considered final pending ten day appeal period and payment of the required appeal fee. For anyone that wishes to appeal the decision of the Planning Commission, please contact City Clerk with the appeal process questions or visit the City of Millbury website. Final item, agenda item four D, downtown and El Camino specific Real specific plan and land use designation map amendment. This is proposed amendment to the downtown and El Camino Real specific plan and land use designation map, and supporting text to amend the commercial preference area overlay and to extend the overlay to include five corridor mixed use zone parcels at the corner of El Camino Real and Center Streets, and all residential focus mixed use zone parcels along El Camino north of Meadow Glen. Andrew.
Good evening, Chair Wong, members of the Planning Commission. So next slide, please. This item came out of the January ninth City Council meeting. In that meeting, the City Council was reviewing an item related to two of their goals, adopting a local density bonus program, and also reviewing the inclusionary housing percentage, which is currently 15%. That was a sort of a related discussion, and what that did is it led to a discussion about what they what we could do to expand opportunities to improve economic development and housing in the mixed use zoning districts along the El Camino Real corridor, particularly the northern portion of the corridor. The downtown and El Camino Real specific plan was adopted on December first, 2022, and it's not unusual for cities to come back and review the effectiveness of these specific plans or zoning regulations after they get adopted. You know, we've had a few years of this. We've we've worked with applicants on the current development standards, and we've had a number of discussions with various developers. You know, obviously, nine five nine El Camino folks, we've talked with folks with Anton, they're redeveloping the El Rancho Insight and some other property owners. And and so a lot of this came out of those discussions, and also with the direction of the council from the January ninth meeting. So what we're proposing tonight are some minor amendments to improve feasibility of development. And as you know, obviously, the housing market is a lot different today than it was a few years ago with interest rates going up, and it's a little bit tighter for a lot of builders these days, and so it's important for us to really rethink what we can do. And this is sort of a package of a number of things that are going on at the same time to help development. One of the things that was at just last Tuesday's City Council meeting was an ordinance to enable the council to waive the escalation of development impact fees. And as you know, every year, we have an index. It's the Engineering News Record does an index of inflation, and we adjust our development impact fees upward based on that index. And so, you know, the index has been running around three, three and a half percent lately, but in the past, it was as high as, I think, something around like eight percent. And that's pretty hard for developers when they do, you know, when they when they want to pencil out these projects, and then they, you know, they see where inflation goes. So the council passed that in first reading, that'll be in second reading next Tuesday. That really kind of goes along with this package of things that we're looking at to help facilitate and encourage development in the El Camino Real corridor, because, as you know, in our in our plan and our housing element, this is where we're focusing our housing, our commercial development. This is really where this is our our main commercial corridor, and and we want to make sure we get it right. We also want to see progress. We want to do what we can to help facilitate these these projects going forward. Next slide, please. So, you know, so staff really looked at ways to to help kind of make things better based on some feedback that we got from different developers and their experience with the current downtown and El Camino Real specific plan. And the idea is to make these these sites along the corridor to be more feasible for development. And so we're proposing a few minor amendments to improve mixed use residential and commercial to make them more feasible and available. We want to encourage mixed use residential housing, but we also want to retain revenue generating commercial land uses along El Camino Real, because these are really the only places in town where we're going to see, you know, businesses that generate revenue for the city. At the same time, we also, it's the main place where we're going to put housing density. So we really are looking at, you know, how can we improve on our our standards for both of these, because, you know, obviously, the city needs revenue to be operating, but we also need housing for our people, so it's we have we have to balance these two needs. Next slide. So just a summary of the proposed changes in a nutshell. We're proposing to expand the commercial preference area overlay along El Camino Real specific plan. What we're proposing is to not only just expand it, and I'll show you where that expansion is going to go, we're also proposing to remove the maximum floor area ratio and the overlay area. Floor area ratios, in fact, Commissioner Chan touched on that topic earlier on an item earlier this night, floor area ratios are really tough, because they often don't line up with setbacks and height limits. It's just it's it's like an additional standard that sometimes doesn't match up. So if you have, let's say you allow, you know, an 85 foot height limit, and you allow, you know, 10 and 15 foot setbacks, but then if you have something like a two and a half, 2.5 FAR, you're never going to fully, you know, meet that site's potential. So it's really like, it's really an additional hindrance on development. And what we've heard from developers is why are you, you know, limiting FAR along El Camino? You know, 2.5 is, you know, pretty low when you're allowing height limits as high as it goes. And so the idea is, well, let's just eliminate the FAR standard. We already have 10 and 15 foot setbacks front and side, you know, in those properties along El Camino Real. We already have a step back on an upper level. You know, we already have these these requirements for for like amenities and residential and that kind of thing. So the idea is just take it away in this commercial overlay. And then on top of that, because, you know, because we do want to retain current ground floor commercial and any kind of business uses, because this is where most of our revenue generating land uses are, if we're going to see mixed use residential happen, we need to help facilitate that. So we're also proposing in the residential focus mixed use area, which is where we're proposing to expand the overlay, to raise that height limit up to 100 feet from 85 feet. We're already seeing projects go above that under state density bonus guidelines, because you can, you can go above the maximum height limit under state density bonus law if you provide the required level of affordable housing. But, you know, like I said, we need housing at all levels of not only affordable, we need, we just need housing, period. And so we thought, you know what? That just seems really low, the adjacent zone, it goes up to 125. We think we need to really accommodate mixed use residential, giving it that extra floor since we are requiring commercial on the ground floor. And like I said, we want to retain street level commercial on El Camino Real. So kind of in a nutshell, that's what we're looking at. The proposed changes, when you get down to it, the way it works, we're going to amend figure five one. I'll show you the next slide, the before and after. I jumped into the next slide. So you can see this is the existing, you see that red hash where the commercial preference overlay area is currently. And to the next slide, you can see how we want to expand that all the way down to Park Boulevard, I think it is. And and that this would this would be affecting those benefiting those properties in that area. A lot of these properties are already mixed use, a lot of residential in that area, but we just want to, we want to make it as feasible as we can to enable, you know, enable and encourage more development in that area. And of course, just, you know, every project that comes forward, it's still going to have to get design review approval from this commission. You're still going to be reviewing all of these projects on a case by case basis. Next slide, please. And so with that, we'd also have to amend the zoning map to be consistent with that exhibit. So on the next slide, the zoning map would be identical. You can see the above is the proposed overlay and below is the existing. Again, it's lining up exactly with that exhibit in the specific plan. We have to be consistent between the two. And we're not changing any underlying zoning. We're not changing, you know, we're not changing any specifics, just that overlay. We're identifying in that overlay along El Camino Real. Next slide, please. And so, you know, to do that, like I said, we'd be amending the development standards to allow mixed use residential to be up to 100 feet in the in the orange area. That's the residential focus mixed use zoning. And then we'd be removing the floor area ratio maximum for all development within that commercial preference area overlay. In order to do that, of course, there's also some consistency things, some minor consistency things that we're going to update elsewhere in the plan, because obviously, the plan has to be internally consistent. So, you know, we'd update, we have the text in chapter five that's in the packet. We're not striking out any text in the existing specific plan, it's simply adding more text. So in your attached exhibit A, I believe it is, it shows the new text being added in red. There's no strikeouts, we're not deleting anything, it's just an addition. And of course, we'd have to add the clarifying text. Next slide, please. We'd have to update the tables, table table five, three, and figure five, two, just to note those those additions where we're eliminating the FAR and the overlay and allowing that 85 to up to 100 feet height limit. Next slide. You know, these are really minor changes, modify, you know, getting rid of the maximum FAR and the height limit. Again, these are things that people applicants could do anyway under state density bonus law. In in this instance, it'd be able, any applicant who's not applying for state density bonus would be able to do this. The height limits are still well within the FAA limits. You know, these are still consistent with the airport master land use plan, it's not a significant increase. And as I said, they'll be reviewed, everything's going to be reviewed under CECL on a case by case basis. Next slide. So tonight's action is a recommendation to City Council. We still have to schedule this before the Airport Land Use Commission and CCG's board. They have to make a consistency determination. That's a very long process, it requires two hearings, and so it won't go back to council until probably April, like late April. There's also a mandatory 90 day tribal consultation period under SB 18. That's been on the books since 2005. Anytime you amend a specific plan or a general plan, you have to do tribal notification. That's already underway. And again, we'll, these exhibits before you tonight are really just for the Planning Commission's recommendation. We're going to clean up the specific plan, and we'll have everything consistent and finalized before it goes to council, obviously, during that time period. So, so with that, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions. I also have, you know, I have the pages ready if you have any questions, I can follow up on that. So that's kind of the idea, is that we just want to kind of loosen up these these certain development standards that we've gotten a lot of comments back on. certain development standards that we've gotten a lot of comments back on from our applicants and how can we benefit development. So happy to hear your thoughts.
So we'll go with any questions for staff and then to public comments. Nathan?
Thanks. This is really exciting to see. So just a clarification question on the height limits. And I, sorry, I didn't notice this earlier. But the, so the 100-foot height limit would only apply north of Meadow Glen, right? So then, like all the CMU, all the corridor mixed use parcels that are in like the Millbrae Square area that are part of the existing overlay are still bound by 85 to 65 feet?
No, forward. Keep going. One more. Thanks. Okay, carry on.
Right, so, right, so, so basically, all the numbers, all the numbers north of Meadow Glen are being proposed to increase to 100 except for that, except for, I guess, the San Anselmo one and, actually, yeah, and then, but then the, the 85, 65, everything south of Meadow Glen, those numbers stay the same?
So, right now, I would say that, you know, let's go to a different map. Can we go to the, go back up to like slide, what is that, 3? Okay, that's good, that's good. So in the orange, that's residential focus mixed use. You can see how the overlay is extending north in those residential focus mixed use properties along El Camino Real. The blue, commercial mixed use zoning, it's already up to 125 feet. So 100 feet is obviously less than that. But what this does is it allows mixed use residential in that residential focus mixed use zoning, that'd be the orange zoning, north going from Meadow Glen all the way up to Park on the west side of El Camino Real. And I forgot the name of, I forgot the street center, all the way up to basically the city limits. That's where, that's where you would allow residential mixed use to go up to 100 feet. And we don't want to, we don't want to penalize mixed use. You know, when you have to have mixed use, you know, your ground floor is going to be commercial or offices or like your leasing office or something like that. So we really need to unlock those upper levels for more housing. And so that, that orange zone, which is residential focus mixed use, that's where those land uses would be able to go up to 100. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, that helps.
Being there commercial, the first floor is generally, how tall?
Typically, it's high.
Yeah.
High as 15 or 16 feet.
Oh, yeah.
And that's why it makes sense to add, you know, 15 feet at the top floor, absolutely.
Okay.
And we thought about that.
So then, when you go up, how many floors is?
It would effectively allow them another, another floor. The first floor is usually a podium, it's usually concrete, because we typically see wood frame on concrete construction, or wood frame on podium construction. And the ground floor is oftentimes, when they do want to have parking or it's required, they'll have that. Usually, you don't put housing units on the ground floor facing a busy street like El Camino. It's just, you know, projects just aren't designed that way. So this would effectively add another level, maybe two, depending on the plate heights.
Just right now, along that stretch, there's just one level.
Correct.
So this would allow four more, 100 feet?
100 feet would effectively allow, help me out, Nestor, probably, probably seven stories, maybe eight.
Really?
But that's as high as you could get with, you know.
So then, all of these, even, even if it's a small, you know, 25-foot, a lot of them are narrow.
Yeah.
That means you're going to have to require elevators on all these buildings.
We require, I mean, elevators are required anyway for anything over one story. If you have any kind of use on a second floor, you have to have an elevator.
Really?
Yeah. That's, that's just ADA and also.
I guess ADA.
Also Fair Housing Act, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So even these small parcels, when they start filling out?
I want to say, you know, earlier in my presentation, I said this is part of a package of things that we're looking at. And one of the things that the council approved on the 9th was also a local density bonus ordinance. So one of the things that, that we're going to be looking at is a benefit for people who combine lots. So that's, I should have pointed that out, that that's part of the deal. And this kind of goes along with that. So the idea that, what, and Harrison Associates, our housing element consultant, is going to be working on this with us, is the idea is that we want to incentivize developers who merge small lot parcels. And if they do that, we want to create some kind of incentive that would benefit them and encourage them to do that. Because exactly as you pointed out, that's a big problem is that we have lots of small, narrow parcels. And we want to encourage applicants to come in, get these parcels, put them together, you know, and be able to build on it because that's the only way we're going to get housing. So that's going to come along with a suite of incentives that we're working on.
Yeah, because then, then you need an elevator, that takes up space.
It does.
And I'm more familiar with that site because I live up there. And, and, you know, I look at them and they're all pretty narrow.
Or questions? So if there are no other questions, let's go to public comments. If there are any persons wishing to speak on this item?
No, there are no hands raised.
Motion to close public comments?
I'll make them.
Okay, Catherine makes it.
I'll second.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Yes.
Thank you, public comment is now closed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for staying up there, Andrew. So discussion items, any further questions, thoughts, concerns? Nathan?
So I, I think this is a really exciting proposal. You know, as, as, you know, over the past year, there's been much consternation about how the city is going to be replacing sources of revenue. And so, you know, really emphasize giving, incentivizing development along El Camino is the, seems to be the best path forward, the best action that we could take to secure that. In terms of, I, I think this could be bolder. To me, you know, we've, the whole point of this specific plan is to establish a Grand Boulevard down El Camino. So much of our documentation presents very dramatic images of us achieving that on our general plan time horizon. And I think, you know, the Grand Boulevard should go all the way to the station area. So I think we should be open to extending the overlay all the way down. If we're not planning to do that, I, or if there's, there's not appetite to do that on the commission, I do think that some of the heights could be harmonized a bit. It's a little weird to me that you have the residential focus mixed use have the heights increased to 100 on the north side. But then, the corridor mixed use parcel at the very edge of Center Street, where Yan Peninsula, I think, is right now, and the Millbrae Square CMU parcels are still capped at 85 and 65. You know, seems to me, the 100-foot limit should at least apply across the entire overlay. And then even looking beyond El Camino, if we're going to extend the overlay, if the overlay is on the, is, applies to the Millbrae Square property where living spaces is and everything like that, it's, it doesn't, it seems, it doesn't seem, it seems consistent that we should, could at least consider extending it to the land where 24 Hour Fitness is. So yeah, those are my suggestions. I think there's more that we could be doing. But I like the proposal as is. I think we could go much bigger in terms of the geographic range. And I also think that there could be more consistency across the entire overlay section and not just increase the height limits on the, the residential focus mixed use parcels.
I have a question or wondering about, there's shades on the map for residential focus mixed use and then there's the overlay with the commercial preference area. And I'm wondering if that really has any teeth? Because if it's a residential focus mixed use, it already implies that there should be some commercial mixed in. But then, if it's also designated as commercial preference area, what are we really saying? Is that if somebody comes in with a large commercial building or, you know, workplace property, then that takes priority over residents? And then, you know, if there is a residential focus mixed use, you know, what's considered mixed use is one little corner of the building that's maybe the property management site that's not residential, so is that, is that considered mixed use? But where, and where is, you know, high-density residential? So nowhere on the map is there specified that it's all, all a residential building. Those are just some questions that I had to might consider when you have the definitions for these. I know we've, we've already created the map, but just thinking a little bit more critically here how that's going to play out and what we're going to get.
Yeah, and the reason why is that the residential focus mixed use where there's not this overlay, you could build, you know, just solid residential. But the plan already says that we want to see commercial along El Camino Real. So again, this is one of those, excuse me, one of those kind of adjustments that we, in hindsight, we thought was really necessary. And zoning overlays, even though it is called a commercial preference overlay, are really useful tools because it allows you to maintain the underlying zoning, but then in a certain, uncertain parcels, you can give them just a little bit, something more. A lot of cities I've worked at have zoning overlays with different names and sometimes they allow higher density, sometimes they allow higher height limits. And so that was kind of the idea, is to use the existing overlay that we already have. And that overlay already has some provisions that, you know, like I said, that's encouraged that commercial along El Camino, so.
So it almost seems like it, you know, having all these mixed use sites, it almost seems like there's no need to have strictly commercial or strictly residential if the facility can be mixed use or we encourage that. So I don't see purpose for commercial, but then there's no designation, like I mentioned again, for completely residential, but it's kind of confusing to me. The one critical comment I wouldn't make, though, is that, and I've said this before when we were developing this general plan before, is that it seems very disconcerting and concerning for residents if we have a very large, tall, like 100-foot building back-to-back with a single-family R1 unit, which seems to be the case in this. Because there's the yellow, single-family residences with 30-foot height limitations and then you're going up against 85 and now up to 100 foot. And having somebody in your backyard that's 100 foot tall when you're, you know, in a residential property, it's, we, I think we really need to look at tapering so that you don't have that juxtaposition of just very tall 100 foot next to 30-foot single-family house. So just taper it down, either taper it down from the large commercial mixed use building or upsize to allow them to develop R2 or R3 or larger. And unless there's a buffer, like a street across the street, maybe a single-family house from a larger building or the train tracks or just some setback or another case, just think about the tapering. So people can be very upset to have, you know, the 100-foot tall limitation right back-to-back with their property fence line too. Yeah. So that goes with a few different locations on here. Richmond Drive, northern part of Broadway, we see that Hemlock and portions further down south Broadway also, and Magnolia.
That's why when they did the Bellamore, we had transitioned that building. But it was a larger parcel. The part that was on the Magnolia side was, or on the Broadway side, was much lower and then it went.
The commission will be able to review everything, obviously, on a case-by-case basis. So this is certainly something that, certainly it would be within your review.
Okay.
Something about this in the residential years ago, where in that part of town, north part, the lots are small and people were really getting concerned when big two stories and everybody else was a little one-story. And, and they were so close together because lots are small.
Yeah. I should also note, I talked about, one thing I forgot to add, I talked about the package of other things that we're working on. We're also planning on embarking on an east side specific plan. That is also a council priority. So all of the properties that are located to the east of the downtown and El Camino Real specific plan area, we're going to be undertaking a new specific plan for that area of town in the coming years. And so that's a project that is in the very early stages right now. So that's also going to be looked at. We're going to be reviewing these, these properties adjacent to this area in the future.
And doing?
We're basically going to be doing a specific plan for this whole side of town. And we haven't figured out what we want to do yet. We have, you know, obviously, we got to go through feedback and visioning and conceptual ideas, but that's something that we're going to be kicking off in the coming year.
Any further thoughts, discussion items, questions?
Questions.
Sam?
So with the increased density or the potential to increase density, has there been or will there be an assessment of the infrastructure that could support that anticipated growth? Utilities, sewage?
Yeah, we, we've already done those assessments in the general plan because, and also with the housing element, because as you've, as you know, we've identified arena numbers and what we have to, our goals for housing development. So we've already done that assessment. It's already in place. And we do have adequate water and sewer capacity for our housing projections that are in our housing element and general plan.
And I want to echo Chair Wong's comment about just having zone in such a way where you're going to have the abutting adjacent property with such a large difference in height or potential height. I, I wish there was some way to address that.
Yeah. You know, there's, there certainly are provisions in the specific plan about transitions. But again, case by case, you know, we're going to be looking at these. There is a setback in the rear, obviously, I think it's under 15 feet. But, you know, certainly, a lot of developers, when they do come in, they usually try to like step back when they do have those extreme height limits. Yeah, it, it is a fair comment, yes.
Catherine?
Yeah, that's, there was a big do with the Moosie Building.
Yeah.
And commercial on El Camino and the houses on Hemlock.
Yeah.
That caused, I think we need to tell people, these things can happen.
Yeah.
In the future.
Yeah, that's right.
And if you're going to buy something right next to commercial.
This is, this is a common problem among cities all over the Bay Area. I've had this very topic in my last three or four jurisdictions. You're dead on, yes.
And I think, how tall was, does anybody know how large that building was?
100 feet, airport limitation?
I can't remember. It was, it was about, oh, yeah.
TOD projects.
More than 100. Yeah, it couldn't have been more than 100, so it was 100, right next to single-family homes on Hemlock.
Forgot off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, me too.
Yeah. It does have, we call it a, it's sometimes called a step back, um, so we do have that identified, like, our, our current plan does require a step back when you get to the upper level, so we do at least have that.
Well, I think those buildings...
Yep.
Many of the, of the parcels have, from, you go from El Camino Real, like Broadway, they, they, the, the, the heights do reduce. There's a few, and I think it's the yellow, uh, parcels that, that, uh, Chair Wong, where, I don't know if it's really possible, they're too close to, you either have no height on El Camino, or, you know, you, you're, you're gonna have that situation.
Yeah.
But I think in a lot of places, especially on the southern end, you've done that. I mean, there's a, you know, you go from 80 to 60. So I, I just, I just wanna acknowledge that, 'cause I think...
That's right.
The plan tried to accomplish that.
We, I can read it, so I mean, the current downtown and El Camino Real specific plan says buildings taller than 65 feet shall have a minimum six-foot-deep step back for stories above 65 feet. So the higher you go above 65 feet, you do have to taper the building back. There's also requirements for, uh, vertical breaks for buildings longer than 125 feet. Those are all currently in the plan, so we do have those baked in now.
So we have a statement on our agendas that the EIR, um, state there's no substantial changes proposed projects, which will require major revision of the previous general plan EIR, et cetera. So if we were to make the recommendation for continuance to look at, uh, adding, you know, I guess either, A, evaluating it based on, uh, adjacent R1 properties next to a 100-foot tall, uh, allowable zoned lot, um, either, you know, uh, allowing or upsizing the residential lots so that it allows for tapering into the community, or, um, maintaining 80 foot, 5 foot, or, or reducing that, or, or looking, making sure that there's a buffer between those R1 properties and streets versus, versus the 100-foot. Uh, how much more, uh, work would that require? Is it simple, or would it require a lot more study, like?
Well, my comment would be, it's already in the specific plan. So...
Right.
You're just asking for something that we've got.
Exactly. If we're planning to make changes, then why don't we address all this main issue once, once and for all? If it's possible.
I don't think you're understanding, Andrew, it's already in the plan. It's there.
Yeah, I mean, in...
You don't need it in adjustment, it's already there.
And there's some other provisions already in the plan, so...
We're talking about changing it, so we're allowed to, uh, continue to change it to make, uh, address the issues, and that's what I'm proposing.
Is it time for a motion?
Do we open the public comment period?
Did we already do that? I can't remember anymore. We've done so many open and closes now, I can't remember.
Yeah, that's done.
We've opened and closed, thank you.
Have we done that yet?
Yes.
Yep, we did, we closed it already, didn't we? That's what I thought, so...
The commissioners could make a motion if they so chose.
Then, I'd like, where is it? Uh, make a motion to approve the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Millbrae to recommend the Millbrae City Council adopt the amendments to the downtown and El Camino Real specific plan and the Millbrae zoning map.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and Christie, with the vote?
Okay. Um, Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
No.
Motion passes 4-1 with Chair Wong voting against.
And, uh, just a reason, we just suggest, uh, addressing some other issues there on the map. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. I'm gonna stay up here.
Okay, great. So, um, we are in the, probably the eighth inning of this, uh, going on to agenda item number five, new business. There's no items for new business, then we'll go on to, uh, agenda item number six, staff updates.
First and foremost, I want to welcome and introduce, um, Michelle Lee, our new, uh, Community Development Department, uh, uh, admin. We're very happy to have her here. We are going to be training her on how to help run a, uh, planning commission meeting. Christie's gonna be transitioning, um, you know, back to her normal duties, and we're very excited to have her here. I believe, I believe you came from the, uh, San Mateo Office of Education, is that right? Did I name that correctly? She's been working in local government for many years now, um, so she certainly does know her way around, uh, the office, and we're, we're just very delighted to have her here, and so you'll be seeing her, uh, at, uh, future meetings from here forward. I'm so welcome. Some staff, uh, updates. I, uh, I sent an email to everyone, uh, earlier, and I mentioned this, um, the revised draft housing element is finally at the finish line. I sent you an email this morning mentioning it's online now for public comment. It's, it is scheduled to go before City Council on Tuesday, the 27th. That's in a week. We are not bringing it back to Planning Commission for review because it's not required by law, um, and the changes that we made from HCD are not substantially different from the prior two versions. They've asked us to add more housing mobility programs to be compliant with state law, uh, and they've also, uh, uh, they've also asked us to have our, um, oh, Nester, help me, the word reasonable, um, the 95... Thank you, realistic capacity from 100% to 95%. So, um, our, in our, in our analysis of our inventory sites, you know, we, we estimated that when people do come in to develop, they're gonna develop as much as they can. HCD said, "Well, nah, maybe not, we don't necessarily agree with that." So we had a lot of back-and-forth discussion. We pointed out that, you know, the projects that we're seeing, they often come in for, you know, the local, or for the state density bonus. We've got these plans, you know, we wanna improve, uh, and, you know, we wanna focus our housing in these areas, and they said, "Well, okay, 95%." So we've modified the, um, assumptions to have a 95% realistic capacity for future development. Um, we didn't have to rezone any sites, we didn't have to revisit, you know, our inventory, so it's really just focusing on housing mobility programs mostly. Um, we've got the red lines online now, you're welcome to review those. But the wonderful news, and after I sent you that email today, I've been waiting eight, since I started, it's been almost 18 months now. I about passed out when it showed up in my inbox this afternoon. I'm so excited, I had to share it with you and everyone else in the world. This is the letter from the state of California that says, "I'm gonna cry." I really am. The draft, uh, elevator meets the statutory requirements of the state housing element law?
Where's the champagne?
And it will substantially comply with housing element law when submitted, so...
Good job.
Damn, it was hard. This is my second housing element, this was really hard. Wow. So we're, hey, we're there, we're at the finish line.
So that puts us on the top of many cities.
Yes. Congratulations, thank you for your hard work.
No, thank you. I mean, you were a part of this, we all, we were all in this together, this is a group effort, my staff, everybody. I mean, I came in half, you know, I came in halfway through the process, so... Yeah, wow. So that's great news. I'd pop the champagne, but I'm not allowed to drink on the job, so... We use the Martinelli for Roscoe's babies. I think with that, uh, we don't have any agenda items for the March 5th meeting right now. It is March 5th, right? No, 4th, I'm sorry. Apologize for our next, um, planning commission hearing. There is a small chance that something may pop up in a day or two, but I doubt it. So if we don't have any agenda items, we'll send out a notice of cancellation, um, just to let you know, so, um... Oh, we already missed the noticing period, well, dang, there you go, so we canceled it. Sorry. I don't have anything for the agenda anyway, so...
There's a, uh, training coming up, isn't there?
There is, um...
29th?
I announced it at the last meeting, I forgot the date.
Next week, next Thursday.
Yeah, that's right, and it's in the Chakuti Room. Anybody attending that?
I sign up for it.
Oh, great. Great. That's another...
We're going to the Lunar New Year dinner.
Yeah. I heard that it was conflicting with a number of, um, city events, so unfortunately, we didn't organize it, um, other agencies did, so... But, um, but it's exciting, you know, it's, at least it's here, it's the best date, so...
There's also commissioner and committee training on March the 7th, from 6 to 8, so you guys have an email from Elaine on that.
There will be some reminders.
Yeah, I'm sure she will send out a reminder, yes.
Sorry, I'm, I'm just so caught up in the housing element of today.
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, so, um, with that, I think that concludes our staff updates. Um, I really, uh, I really appreciate all your, your work as planning commissioners. I just wanna reiterate, uh, oh yeah, I had one more, I'm sorry, I have one more announcement. The, um, the City Council, we did a, I mentioned in my last meeting, we had a tree ordinance. It went to council for discussion, the council's asked us to hold a public workshop, uh, for residents to help vet this tree ordinance a little bit more. Uh, we're gonna be having that on Thursday, March 21st. That's the tentative date, I haven't gotten the ads or the notices out, um, but we're, uh, we're gonna have basically some kind of event either in the Chakuti Room or maybe at the rec center. I'm not sure what facility is available yet, but, uh, the date we picked was, um, Thursday, March 21st, and so we'll get the word out, and, um, people will come and be able to chime in on the, the tree ordinance. At the council meeting last Tuesday, um, the, uh, I think the comments were really, people were just concerned about, like, rear yards, you know, requiring people to, to get a tree permit for something in the rear yard, and also the cost of tree permits. Obviously, cost is a sensitive issue for residents, so I almost forgot to add that, so, um, I'll leave it at that. And, uh, as I tell my, uh, other commissions and committees, um, you are volunteers, and we really appreciate the work that you do, uh, as planning commissioners, and I just wanna thank you for your, your commitment and your time, day in and day out, and as late as 9:30 in the evening, so, um, this is kind of a long agenda for a typical planning commission meeting, but I really appreciate the work that you do. Thank you.
When is, we don't have... It is the 7th?
Yes, it's the 7th, and you know what? I'll go ahead and send out the flyer for that, so you have it.
Okay, thank you, Andrew, and thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Uh, work is really prolific, a lot of work here went into this, and, uh, welcome, Michelle. Any other, uh, commissioner updates, announcements?
First, I want to congratulate the Millbrae Cultural Committee on their successfully, despite being rescheduled, Lunar New Year Festival. Rain held off for quite a bit of the day, not the entire day, I, but, you know, it, congrats to them. On the same holiday theme, encourage folks to, uh, get their tickets for the Rotary's Lunar New Year banquet that is being held on Leap Day, February 29th. I understand there are still tickets available, one of the, um, most festive events in town. And, um, I will say one more time, congratulations to staff on the, um, the letter. I'm gonna take this home. And I also wanna say happy birthday to my great nephew, he is one today, happy birthday, Will.
Oh my God, is he one already? My God. Babies grow too fast.
And if there's no other announcements, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.